This is not a mystery.
Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Beraza?
Here.
Nancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Piper?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Chanset?
He will be late.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Siron?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
Necessary quorum for the meeting. First, next item of business is a reminder to please speak directly in the microphone. If you come up and use the podium, make sure to adjust the mic for your height. Item number three is items to be removed, added or changed. Do we have anything?
I'm just adding the executive session.
Okay. We'll add an executive session under 13A, and that would be for litigation. And item number four, which is matters from the public. Do we have anything from the public tonight that's not on the agenda? Okay, move on to item five is a consent agenda. A would be ordinance 2365 amending the city code to allow for off-site document storage. B would be resolution 23138R authorizing purchase of John Deere 524-wheel loader from Westside Tractor Sales for $140,224.01. Item C would be resolution 23139R authorization to purchase a 2024 Toyota Model 058FBM 45T electric lift truck from Atlas Toyota Material Handling for $79,047. I'll make the motion that we send to council the consent agenda as read.
Second?
Motion by Wolf, second by Uer. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Just real quick on these, just.
Alan, one, one, on the, the one memo, I think it was a typo, it said total for both trucks on the, the wheel loader. So that should probably get corrected before the council meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I figured it was a typo.
Get that changed, okay. And that, just so everybody makes sure that you read through there that those are both, I think, under budget prices.
Budget, yeah, exactly, yes.
And it's a fully electric lift truck instead of gas or diesel or whatever we have now, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And it's actually available?
Well, 10 to 12 months.
Right. As long as it, as long as we get it next year, that's good. I'm glad to see that. Okay, then we'll move on to item number six, which is the fire department strategic plan.
I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that you can share yours.
Really excited about this. This is really the first strategic plan that we've had like this for fire department, for department. I think this is really cool, and I hope we get to see all these from all the rest of the departments now. Keep these guys busy.
Alrighty, so I just want to start off by saying that this has been a incredibly collaborative effort across the entire fire department. As you'll see behind me, we've got a great group of folks here who have been on our strategic planning committee since the start. And I really just want to say that this has been truly a collaborative process between labor, between management, between pretty much everyone and every level of the organization. Admin assistants paid on call, brand-new firefighters, career firefighters, paramedics, et cetera. So we've made sure that in creating this plan, that everyone's voice has been included. And that, you know, in talking to our firefighters and paramedics and talking to our staff, we already held a meeting with them to introduce the plan to them, to talk through it a little bit. I think it was well received, so now I'm obviously going to introduce it to you all and answer any questions you may have. So our strategic planning committee consisted of Chief Hanson, Deputy Chief Lucas, Battalion Chief Swinski, Lieutenant Stevens, firefighter, paramedics, McDonald, De Nicola, Heisler, and then paid-on-call supervisor Spencer, and then Laura was also involved in this process. So a little bit about how we got to this end product. First things first is we held shift meetings with every single shift within the fire department to understand some of the issues that they've identified either within their own shift or within the department as a whole. Prior to this shift meeting, we, we distributed a survey to all of our members, and I think we got 35-something responses, which we felt was pretty good. And that helped identify some of the main issues that we would be trying to solve and address within this plan. So from there, we took the feedback that we received and that guided our actions that we're going to be taking within the plan. That basically everything you, everything you see in here is designed to get at a specific problem that was identified by our team. From there, we went back to staff and continued to make sure that the ideas we were presenting and the measures we were including aligned with where they think the department needs to go and where we all want to take the department. We created our logic models that show how we took our resources, starting with the budgets that you give us, the resources, the equipment that you give us, and how we turn those into outcomes for our citizens and our residents. And then the ultimate goal of any strategic plan, and especially the way we've designed this plan, is it's not just a plan, it's a way of doing things. It's a plan that leaves everyone in the department and everyone in the, the city knowing their role in making these outcomes happen. It also allows us to hold each other accountable, who's doing what, when they're supposed to have it done by. And that's how we got from really the start of just asking, how can we make this place better, to ultimately this? That's kind of the whole process at the, at the high level. So as a bit of background, I'm not going to touch on every single thing within this plan. I sent it to you earlier, I think last week. If you have any questions, you can obviously ask them today or follow up via email or anything like that. Like I said, this was a collaborative effort between pretty much everyone in the fire department, and I think that's something that we're all really proud of in developing this plan. So a couple of issues that we talked about and that we heard from our staff was really needing to be more proactive in how we do things. Thinking ahead, thinking forward, what trends, what issues are on the horizon or are already here that we need to catch up on. So that's one thing. Second is how do our budgets connect to our mission and vision, and how do they contribute to our outcomes, making those alignments really clear? Three, and we know this based on the citywide staff survey as well, is that expanding and better use of technology and access to technology within the department, more opportunities for advancement in leadership, improving clarity into the decision-making process and improving information sharing across the department, and also from the fire department to other city departments and other city departments to the fire department. So improving that. And then improving accountability at all levels of the organization. A mutual accountability system where everyone holds each other accountable to high standards is really what we're trying to achieve and accomplish with this plan. So some of the things that are designed, let me minimize this so I can see them all. I'm going to walk you through basically some of the items within the plan that are designed to address specific issues. So one issue we found is really being proactive in how we're approaching the fire department and how we're approaching our future issues. So there's an increased emphasis throughout the plan on interdepartmental training, more training between the fire department and police department, fire department, police department, and public works departments, our fire department with neighboring fire departments. Those are all things you'll find in the plan. There's also a greater emphasis on having the fire department really be a core part of all of the city's activities and understanding that what we do as a city impacts the fire department, and what the fire department does impacts the city, and that we are needing to be on one kind of cohesive team. Another thing you'll see in there is an EMS equipment replacement schedule, making sure that any equipment we have on our ambulances are being replenished regularly, that everything's up to date, and that we're not having things break down potentially. Another thing you'll find within the plan is a real strong commitment to enhance and formalize community risk reduction programs, both citywide but especially at our senior facilities. We know that we have a number of senior facilities, and that number continues to grow. They also probably make up a significant portion of our calls and what we have to deal with with regard to the ambulance service. So continuing to reduce the need to go to facilities, improve safety, improve conditions is another thing you'll find in here. Looking at our facility conditions, you know, our fire stations are not old by any means, but they're getting to that age where we still need to start, some start, some things start to, to break down a little. So we're going to be ahead of that and make sure that as things come up for repair and as we know things might be reaching end of life potentially, that we're ahead of those and getting ahead of that. Another thing that you will have seen in the citywide plan, that the fire department plan also touches on, is a city, is a software evaluation, looking at what software we're using, opportunities for consolidation, anything that maybe not, isn't well-received or well-used, and what opportunities exist to make that, make those all talk to each other and work together. Another thing you'll see in here is a cost-benefit of in-housing ambulances. That's an issue that we talked about, is something that we know is on the radar long-term, and it's something that simply doing the cost-benefit of understanding if they, if we chose to go down this path, what are the costs of doing that? What are the benefits of doing that? It's not saying we are or aren't, it's just doing the research and understanding what that may need to look like in the future, or, you know, hopefully it doesn't get to that point, but whatever it looks like long-term, we want to be prepared and ready for that. That's one of the things within this plan that you'll see is being proactive and making sure that changes that may be in the horizon are prepared for and addressed. Similarly, reviewing retirement eligibility is for proactive backfilling. We know we have a number of staff coming up on retirement eligibility, and that one of the things we would like to do is as those folks are retiring, we're bringing someone in ahead of time and sort of building a mentorship relationship as one person's leaving and another person's coming in. Making sure that we don't have gaps in employment and gaps in staffing when someone leaves and the time someone has to come in. Another thing that we'll be hopefully researching is what it would take. Another thing that we'll be hopefully researching is what it would take to build our own training facility and what that consists of. In talking to our firefighters and talking to our staff, it is getting increasingly difficult to get into other training facilities and the logistics of doing so are getting increasingly difficult. You have to take a rig out of service essentially to send them off to another site, which means you can't have them responding to calls in Batavia if they're out in another city. So these are things that we want to look into and see what that takes, you know, as we're going down the line, as we're considering a new police station, just getting that thought going and understanding that, you know, if council does decide to go down that route, here's some of the things that it'll take and get that planted in your heads early. And then another thing is the Fire Department has a number of committees that can be quite powerful in terms of how they're used. One of the things within the plan is really dedicating to regular meeting schedules and regularly doing things within committees, reporting out of committees, and using those to the full potential that we know that can be. Second, how do budgets connect to our mission and vision? More appropriately, how is our budget advancing our strategy is the way I like to think about it. So really, two things in here. As Laura said before, we're, we're planning on moving forward with this ClearPlan Strategic Planning Tracking Software that's through ClearGov, it connects to our budget, and that allows us to track internally and also provide you all as elected officials an insight into where projects stand, where things are, who's responsible, who's doing what, what teams are working on different projects, what their budgets are. And so we hope that gives you all, as well as our residents, a clear look as to how we're doing our strategic plan and how we're achieving what we hope to achieve within the strategic plan. And then in the future, we would have liked to do this with this budget, things didn't necessarily work out as well as we would have hoped with timing, but future budgets, we're going to view the budget through the lens of a strategic plan. How does every dollar we're allocating advance our goals as a city? And when we look through that lens, we're taking a much more strategic look at how we do government and how we make things better long-term. So next, we've got use of technology and access to technology. Couple of things in here are improved EMS props that may include things that are more technologically advanced to allow for better, more advanced training. We're going to be measuring and hoping to improve the onboarding process. That's really going to consist of finding out how it's going, using Qualtrics and measuring it, then making changes to that based on what we've identified as ways to improve it. A maintenance record system is something that we consider, just so we're making sure that when we do maintenance on our vehicles, that we're keeping up to date and making that an electronic process as opposed to, I think it's in paper right now, am I correct in saying that? Anyways, yeah, so it's a process that could be improved, to say the least. Same with work order processes, how we get our vehicles, stuff at the station fixed, anything that may need to be fixed, just improving that process. I've already mentioned the citywide application audit, which is designed to really understand all of the different application systems we're using and opportunities for consolidation and streamlining those. We also place a priority in ensuring that there's sufficient access to technology. That was one of the things that was brought up by our staff, is that there isn't enough technology to facilitate them doing their jobs to the fullest potential, so we want to make sure we get them that so they can do what they need to do each and every day. Also, one of the things that we heard of was we had started doing video briefings for our staff on a weekly basis, that was well-received. We're going to make sure we get the software to actually start doing those again, so I'm sure that'll be in the works rather soon. And then lastly, a recognition portal. We know our folks do so much tremendous work every single day and too much of that goes unnoticed, not just externally but also internally, making sure that when we do things the right way, the way we're supposed to be doing them, that we give people a pat on the back as positive reinforcement. We talk about our shortcomings and we talk about where we're doing very well, and that kind of focuses in on just recognizing our staff for doing all the great work they do. Next, we've got opportunities for advancement in leadership. There's a couple of things in here that I think we're really excited about. One is the reinstatement of liaison officers between our Fire and Police Departments, making sure that there's frontline-level staff who serve as liaisons to make sure that coordination happens, any issues are brought up, any, anything that involves the two departments, they're often responding to calls at the same time, just improving that coordination is something that we think will help tremendously. Another thing we're considering is potentially moving toward accreditation process. A number of Fire Departments have been accredited. It basically says you're doing what a great Fire Department ought to be doing, and so that's something that we, we know we have some staff on board who are interested in sort of taking that on and being a part of that. So it's something we're going to look into and will obviously, you know, keep you apprised as anything moves forward on that, what it takes, what it costs, anything like that. Already mentioned training facilities, just getting an understanding of what that may even take or consider. We also interestingly heard from our staff that they want a more concrete and sort of goal-oriented performance evaluation process. And that really ties into what we're doing with LMI is setting goals for ourselves and for our city and then making sure that we're doing things that advance those goals. So this is designed to be, you know, each person within our department is setting a yearly goal for themselves. Is it a promotion? Is it more training? Is it a certification? What does that look like for each person? And then we set a goal for them, their supervisor sets a goal to help them get to where they want to be, and then we're constantly improving and we're having those conversations of, did you reach your goals? Did I do what I needed to do to get you to your goal? And really looking through it that way with a goal of eventually expanding that out citywide to all staff. Making sure that we, as we develop succession plans and as folks may be interested in moving up and being promoted and taking on more responsibility, that it is clear very early on in someone's career what it takes to get to a certain position, what education, what training, what certifications, what experiences, so that when 10, 15, 20 years down the line they're looking to get promoted, they will have known what they needed to do ahead of time and it's not a scramble. And it also allows us to proactively see who might be great for those positions as they come up. Another thing is the National Fire Academy, I believe it's in Washington, is that correct? Yeah. So that, Maryland you said? Close enough. So the National Fire Academy is a, is an intensive leadership and training development course that has received very good reviews. It further expands our desire to give our staff leadership and development opportunities to learn from others, to bring stuff back to the department and bring improvements back to us. Already mentioned some recognition improvements, succession planning, cross-training, so that as folks leave, that we make sure we have every job duty covered within the department, making sure that we're promoting our education reimbursement program so folks who are interested in going to get additional qualifications, degrees, et cetera, know that that exists. And then lunch and learns, both citywide but also within the Fire Department about specific issues they may be having or specific concepts that apply to them, things like retirement, pension, et cetera, maybe that is a little different than everyone else but still is important for them to know. Clarity into decision-making process and sharing of information. Clearplans is one thing that we do think will improve, it helps close the loop, a weekly internal update and annual report to you all, as well to our residents and everyone basically understanding, here's what we do on a weekly basis and then here's what we did over the full year. We know the Police Department does one, we want to do one for the Fire Department as well. And a comprehensive communications improvement plan, this is really just taking all the ideas that came up on how to improve communications with the department and rolling them into a plan that they're going to work on and implement in terms of how we communicate, what channels, what methods, what style of communication, all of that. Another thing is within the standard operating guidelines, when there's a large policy change, we write it in that there's a specific process we go through that ensures that folks are getting involved, that we're centering our action around an outcome. What is the outcome we're trying to achieve with this policy change? And that when our, when our firefighters or our paramedics question it or have ideas, we're always focusing on how do we get to this outcome? And then it's a conversation about which method is the right way and it's problem-solving focused. Regular committee schedule meetings, like I said earlier, using these committees to their fullest potential. I'm not sure of all of our committees that we have, but I know we've got tools, training, facilities, spec. Public education. So basically, any component that happens at the Fire Department has a committee involved in it and using those to do the work, to do the, the planning, to take on the responsibility of making sure that each activity within the scope of a committee gets done. Just the way we say it with employee check-ins is formally informal times to chat, to learn, to talk about issues that we may be having, and really just make sure that folks know that, yes, there's a chain of command for some issues, but it's also okay that, you know, chiefs and deputy chiefs will have time set aside to talk about anything that's bothering them or that they want to talk about or bring up, whether it be something regarding mental health, whether it be something like a plan or some sort of research they did. Just giving them opportunities on issues that don't necessarily involve the chain of command, but still are issues that folks want to talk about or bring up. And then, like I said earlier, greater clarity about what types of issues are best dealt through the chain of command and which ones are something that you can go kind of directly to leadership about and go through those. And then lastly, I'll touch on accountability. This whole thing is designed to do that. The whole plan is designed to hold us all accountable to getting done what we want to get done. When we state goals, includes measures and assigned responsibility that has a way of holding us all accountable because there's data to it, it shows how much or how not much we're doing towards something. Through goal-based evaluations, we're setting goals for both ourselves and our supervisors to achieve those stated goals that we have. Through ClearPlans, every member is going to be able to see status updates, team members' and project plans, so something in there might be a high-level item that you see in the plan, but there's going to be multiple lower-level components to get that done. That's all going to be within ClearPlans and you'll probably, you will likely have access to seeing all those individual components and being able to see where plans are at, where projects are at, et cetera. And then we're going to use this plan to hold each other accountable to the mission and vision of the organization. Folks should be, feel comfortable knowing what's in the plan and making sure that the values and the ideas and the way the plan is designed to move the department forward, that's the standard we're hoping to set with our staff and with our, our leadership is that this is the, we're going to have mutual accountability, we're going to support each other and we're going to get a lot of things done. And so that is, that's a high-level overview of the Fire Department Strategic Plan. It very much follows the same style of the citywide strategic plan that we'll be having another conversation around in a couple weeks. Like I said, it's been a very collaborative effort, there's a lot of good things in here, a lot of small things, a lot of big things, but when added up together, we, the way I told the group is, if we do what's in here, we're going to be really proud of where we are in three years and we're going to be really happy of where we've taken ourselves, what we've accomplished and what we've done. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I've also got a wonderful committee here to answer any fire questions, since they are the experts on that, to say the least. Yeah.
So how long is this plan designed for? I know that like the cities, we kind of decide on five years, I mean, what is the time period?
This is designed as a three-year plan.
Okay.
With the understanding that these plans are flexible and that we may not get to everything we want to get to, but, you know, we prioritize different things and that we've sort of sequenced in a way that higher priority items are first and sort of prerequisite things are first, and then stuff that's less time-sensitive is later on in the plan.
If I could add to that answer as well. In the ideal situation, there would be a city strategic plan in place that then the department plans would dovetail down from that, and so having this be a shorter period of time would allow their next plan to be looking to the city of Batavia's plan and we'll try to get into that cadence in the future.
But these do still cascade in that same way. When you read the citywide strategic plan, there's a number of things that are also in here and vice versa. So for example, like the application audit, that's both a citywide strategic plan and the Fire Department strategic plan, they're not going to be two separate projects, it's just including it in both places so that we understand there's both a citywide component but also a Fire Department component to that.
Yeah, a couple of comments and a couple of questions. You know, I looked through this and not with a fine-tooth comb, but, but fairly closely. I like it, very comprehensive plan, it's a great roadmap, so I commend you on that. I did notice as I was going through this, it's no secret here that I have concerns about the outsourcing of our medics, not one mention in the whole plan of Tri-City Ambulance or PSI.
Actually, there was, yeah.
Yeah, we have in there.
Max covered that to say, but to look at the, bringing the ambulance.
I understand that. I'll get, I'll get to that point, but, but specifically, Tri-City Ambulance, I didn't do a word search for it, but I think if you did, I didn't see it. Or Prairie State. The reason I bring that up is about transparency and that's, it's part of the issue that I've had with this is our community is not so aware that the people that show up in the greatest hour of need are not necessarily city employees. There was two references that said, "We maintain full staff," and it was, the same sentence was in there twice, "we maintain full staff, full staffing levels, including dedicated medics, every day to ensure prompt response and comprehensive coverage." I think that would be an appropriate place to, you know, indicate that we have outsourced that. So I just think as a matter of transparency of not even brushing on that specifically that, that we do outsource that. And then, but, but I was very pleased to see the, the part about the expanded action or a new action to evaluate cost-benefit of in-house ambulances. I was very pleased to see that and I think it probably came out of the discussions we've had, so thank you for, for including that. A couple of questions I have on that, and I, and I think I might know the answer, that on the table on page 34, you have, where that item is listed, you know, the impact is high, resources required high, but it's that the measurement would be cost-benefit is evaluated and then the goal measure completed. Is that meaning that that will be the indication that the goal has been met when that evaluation is completed?
So that would be, so there are things like this that are obviously multi-staged. The immediate goal for this plan is to do the cost-benefit analysis and present that to you all as a council. So the goal for this plan is to have that part done. As a council, once that's done, you will either do something or not do something.
Okay.
But that's where it goes from less of a research thing to a, just a policy question as a city council, and that's something that you'll all obviously have to wrestle with down the line. But for this plan specifically, the goal for staff and the goal for this is to do the cost-benefit analysis and to provide what that data looks like, what that could be.
Okay, so, and, and thank you, that's, helps. As that process is, advances, I'd certainly like the council to be kept of, of rest of that so we know that it's a true analysis, you know, the costs include and the benefits include, you know, the revenue that is brought in by the outsourced company, you know, I know that's something that has been, it's proprietary, it's a private company, we don't necessarily have access to it, however, we do know how many times our ambulances are involved in events and what they can bill for them. So we can figure out what the true revenue is of providing the service, so I would hope that would be included. And also the, the benefits, you know, exceed, you know, they, the benefits should include the camaraderie or the, the team building, you know, when you have a retention issues where there's turnovers, that's, that, that needs to be part of the benefit. So as that plan is developed, I'm, I'm sure you're nowhere near having that, that stuff in place. If you could share that so we could have input.
Exactly.
And the last thing I would say is, does it really have to wait three years, 2026? You know, that's, you know, doing an analysis is not, you know, the, the resources required, yeah, could be high if, you know, it was decided that, that we were going to do that, but it might not be, you know, the revenue that's produced that PSI gets, you know, could offset a lot of the costs that, that we're being told, oh, it'd be too expensive for. The, do we need to wait that long? Is the plan, the evaluation of high resource required?
Do you want to take?
I'll take that because it just, it's not something that we feel that we have the internal expertise to accomplish that, and so similar to other things that are in the city strategic plan, we don't have any budgeted funds to do that with. And so the very first thing that we need to do is to come back with a plan for how the evaluation could be done and then to probably locate a firm with an expertise in that, have them come back with a proposal, and then the project would begin from there. So it doesn't have to take three years, but it, you know, depends what resources are needed and the approvals, so it could possibly get done sooner than three years.
I would hope it would be sooner than three years because I think this is an issue that, you know, we've, we've seen big concerns this year when we received notice from the firefighters that there was- firefighters that there was unmanned ambulances and they weren't allowed to man them. That's a big concern to me. And then just, you know, last week, we exempted ourselves, our employees from the, you know, All Workers, the Paid Leave for All Workers Act, but the PSI employees are not exempt from that. You know, they, the very concern that we had, that can be a concern for our ambulances, that they could all take off on the same day or week and they could not be refused that by law. So I think it's, I think it's a more urgent matter and needs to be looked at sooner than later, so.
Ultimately, with, as with everything, let us know as a city council if there is consensus on something and we can obviously make, these are designed to be incredibly flexible plans. It's, you are in charge. We will do what you prioritize for us, obviously. We're also going to be honest about the resources that it's going to take to do things. Another thing that you will see within this and some of your points earlier about like what gets included, that's what Clear Plans is for. It's designed to be like, the cost-benefit analysis is the high level. Within that, we look at this, we do this, we get this data, we send out an RFP for this, and there's all those smaller components that at the highest level isn't as important, but they go in there and you'll still be able to see that, who's doing what. So that's, that, it's designed to get exactly to that point so you have transparency into where things stand. You'll see, is this started, not started, on track, off track, any data that's associated with it. We're really excited about this.
And I can appreciate that, you know, it is a roadmap and I do think it's a good roadmap. Don't get me wrong, but, you know, you guys know my thoughts on that, so.
Solid point. Thank you.
This training facility, since it sounds like there's a shortage of those in the area, would we presumably also rent that out to other municipalities to kind of recoup the cost on that a bit as well?
That's something that very preliminary was a potential benefit of doing so. It's way down the line.
Understandable.
So this is sort of the thing where it's like, get it started and especially as we consider a police station, what opportunities are there, seeing it? We don't know, but getting these things early on our radar allows us to think more strategically when we have things that may be on similar timelines. So we don't know yet. That's why we do the research now, so five, 10 years from now, we can go, okay, now we maybe need to do more advanced research, do some feasibility. Like all those things get down the line and we start that now with something less formal, perhaps in-house, and looking at what other cities have done, and then down the line we get more and more formal as we actually move toward potential outlays.
Fantastic. Thank you.
No problem.
Does anybody online have any questions?
I don't see any hands up, but Nick.
Nick?
Yeah, I was just curious, meant to get into details, but I know we've reached the pinnacle on the ISO classification. What accreditation, you had mentioned that there are some that you, the department would like to reach. Are there certain ones that we covet or is it?
Hi, my name is Scott Spencer. I'm a paid-on-call supervisor. In my previous life, I was a deputy fire chief in Geneva. I was the accreditation manager there. We've been accredited for 25 years. It's a process. It's a really good process. We realized some really nice things out of it, including a new fire station, some additional staffing. It was a process that took us probably about two years before we were ready for our first site visit for accreditation. Subject matter experts from all over the country come in and they evaluate your department. They spend about four days with us, pretty much seeing that what exactly we were doing, we were, what we wrote in our document, we were actually doing. It's, I have told these guys, they're probably sick and tired of hearing me talk about accreditation, but I just told the chiefs this morning, I'm not letting this go because this is something that's really important. St. Charles Fire Department's accredited, Tri-City Ambulance is accredited, Batavia Police Department is accredited. There's no reason why we shouldn't jump on the bad wagon. It's, it's, really makes you look hard at your department and how you can, how you can make improvements and how well you're doing.
I will say, like, it has been a tremendous process working with the Fire Department. They have pulled many a joke on me. They like to joke as well. No, but it's been a tremendous experience. Newfound appreciation for all that they do and how they're able to do so much on a daily basis is mind-boggling sometimes. So I'm obviously happy to answer any more questions and.
Two kind of related, I wanted the opportunity from anybody else on the committee if you had any comments or, you know, specific passions like Mr. Spencer does. And then also from your perspective, how do we best support you moving forward in this plan?
I can just say one thing about the accreditation process. In Geneva, we made several presentations to our council and we would not move forward without 100% buy-in from the council and from, from city, senior city staff. That's, because otherwise it really doesn't, doesn't do us any good. And then when we come with budget needs and such as that, you know, you guys are like, oh yeah, we're, we're all in on this process. You know, we're, we're here to give you a hand with that. So that's, that's one thing that we're absolutely going to need if we go on with the accreditation process, 100% buy-in from, from you all.
For those that don't know me, Deputy Chief Lucas, I'd just like to say that the best way that you can support us is to engage us with your questions. Obviously, some questions are harder than others, but we don't move forward if we don't answer hard questions. I'd like to say that the committee as well as the department, as Max alluded to, really drove home this plan and took ownership of it. This is not an administration pushed-down plan. The committee has members at every level of the department that we, that we have and they were actively engaged. And they took that to the shifts and to the paid-on-call and engaged them and then came back to those meetings to, to discuss that plan. So everyone within the departments had the opportunity to give their input and buy into the, the plan. And I think that's something you don't see all the time in every department throughout government and, you know, certainly in the private sector. So kudos to all of them for the time and stuff that they, that they spend in it and to Max for helping facilitate that. And I do think that if we, we start on the path of some of these initiatives and stuff that, you know, you'll see some, some improvements in some of the survey data and stuff that was initially presented and, you know, this, you know, we're a great department and we can just, we can be greater as we move forward through it. So like I said, engaging us and, you know, answering those questions for you and just having that dialogue, I think is the, probably the most important step for us to, to move forward on it. Thank you.
Max, there's one thing that I didn't see in there was grant writing or where that fits in as far as funding or, you know, whose responsibility does that end up being? Where does that fit into this? Because I think that that's something that historically we've had quite a few big purchases that have been helped with and I don't know how we address that going forward.
Yeah, so that's, I know grants are something that we work on within the administration department and the department has always on the eye out or keeping their eye out for, what's available and where. So I, I check our grant websites usually once a week at minimum, so we're trying to keep an eye out for what exists. I know Craig gets stuff through.
Because I think that everything else in this plan kind of focuses towards moving forward and all those things that happen, whether it's accreditation or ISO rating or whatever we have, those are all things that we can use that may enable us to be eligible for those grants or, you know, any kind of program that's out there at any point in time that, you know, that's something that can benefit the department, make other things available to them if we have, you know, less pressure on the budget because that'll be something that we're going to deal with every year. You know, especially looking at the prices of what a new fire engine costs or what anything costs. You know, I think that's something that we have to be aware of and we have to figure out how we get that money as a city so that the departments can get everything that they need to do the job they have to do.
As a matter of fact, the department is developing internal expertise in grant writing. I know that Brian D. Nicola recently took a course in grant writing and that will be a big benefit to the department.
And I think that that's important that we not only just in this instance, but in every department start to look for stuff like that, that how can we use, you know, how good our departments are, how, you know, great records that they have, how we can use that to be able to help fund some of this.
A lot of this also goes to, most grant applications nowadays are asking for a lot of data to back up what you're asking for. The data we're going to be collecting and formalizing as part of this plan, documenting in ClearGov, allows us to make significantly better grant applications with more data, with more background. We connect it to a strategy in here and it makes us a much stronger grant applicant when we're going for those, especially when we're going up against, you know, many, many, many other fire departments who are wanting the same exact grant for obviously not enough money to do what we want to do with it. But we're, we're constantly keeping an eye out for grants and usually whenever we see one that we think is worthwhile to apply for, we're going to, we go for it.
Right, and have data already prepared, ready to go was much easier just to plug that in and pull it from somewhere else than have to try to generate it every time.
Exactly.
Go ahead, Chief.
Alan, you're absolutely right. We didn't bring a, put the funding component into this, as Laura had talked before, that that's what's coming through the process that the committees who designed this program or this strategic action plan, which was done, and very proud of them, by the members, for the members to enhance and develop this department to better serve this community. And through that, you know, we look to the partnership, obviously, with you, which we always have and the rest of the departments as they build their strategic action plans to go with the city. So the funding component, obviously, is a necessary part. That's our business side of it. It's our administrative side of it. But of course, we're going to look at all those opportunities and as Scott Spencer has said, Supervisor Spencer, that, that's part of that whole accreditation process and looking into how to better not just fund the department but plan. It's a, it's really a, it's another level of strategic planning when you look at accreditation and you get measured by your peers in other departments on how you're achieving that level. So that's even one level higher than the strategic action plan. So they've, you know, they've set the bar high, but the, you know, not out of the realm of possibility, but for advancement and for achievement to bring this department above the, its excellence to, you know, a very high-level and high-functioning department for this community and the citizens. And we're very proud of, of them and their, you know, their continuous work in wanting to continually strive to, you know, not just be the best, but be better than the best. So we thank you for your support and obviously for all their hard work.
Like I said, I was excited about this. I think this is going to be a great thing going forward and not just for the guys that are there now, but for employees into the future when they come into a department and they see that and they see the engagement from every level and every angle, I think that really speaks volumes about what the department's about.
Absolutely, and it's a team-building process. We've had our challenges over the last couple of years, but we see continuous improvement and that's the whole purpose behind this and working collaboratively. And I can't say enough or thank Max for being our liaison in this and also overseeing this project. Because having someone, and he learned a lot about the Fire Department, but actually having someone who isn't involved in the Fire Department and could look at it, you know, in an open, unbiased aspect and ask the hard questions have made us rethink things and look at things and understand how many of you perceive or don't maybe understand so we can answer those questions correctly. And we heard a lot of, "Why? Why? Why?" But that forced us to rethink some of our, our thought processes. So again, yeoman's work, can't thank Max enough, and I believe he helped us in the team-building process and a lot of credit goes to Max and obviously the committee. So thank you all for your support.
That's a lot of hard work.
Thank you.
One more, one more question regarding this. I know that right now we don't have that visibility into seeing the updates that are being done. Is it possible for us to get updates from members of the committee of stuff that they may be doing so we understand that? And, you know, is it going to, would that ask, is, is it going to be members from that committee that will be able to come in and present to us?
Yeah, I think we were going to have regular kind of check-ins with council and regular reports, either written or presentation-wise, especially on bigger things. But we hope to have clear plans up and running sometime in January. So there, I'd be shocked if there's actually much undertaken between now and when we get it up.
Oh yeah. Who in the general public will have access to Clear Plan?
Yeah.
And anybody can jump into any detail level that they would like, but we still plan to have periodic reports on the status of where we're at.
I just want to leave you with this note is, I think we've seen how a little extra capacity has allowed us to do so much great planning and process improvement and looking at the way we do things. I just encourage you to keep that in mind in when we give ourselves a little bit of slack and at a position like myself and being able to really take those deep looks into what we do, why we do it, how we do it, and improve processes. That's really what saves us costs long-term is being able to do things proactively, strategically so that we know things coming down the line four, five, six, seven, eight years from now, we're able to plan for those and that nothing's really shocking when it comes up in a few years. So I just want to thank you all for your support in supporting all the great work that our Fire Department does. They are some of the nicest, funniest, hard-working people I've met and I am really just glad to have worked with them over the past couple of months on this. So thank you and if you have any other questions or anything, you know how to get ahold of me or anyone on the committee, but we'll bring this back to council.
Thank you. I guess I got one question too. I'm supposed to ask something about Derek Heiser's birthday today? As long as he's here.
Yeah, we went and helped the kids' mother club with toys today and everyone was saying happy birthday to me, so I greatly, greatly appreciate you.
Awesome. Well, happy birthday. That will move on to item seven, which is ordinance 2364, amending the liquor code for allowance of packaged liquor sales by Class K license holder.
This, or, this, let me stop sharing my, we good?
Got it.
All right. This ordinance changes the code to allow for the Park District to serve packaged liquor sales. They want to have an event next year, basically similar to Pints in the Pond, but with wine. And this code would simply allow them to sell it if they so choose.
For consumption off-site?
Yes, off-site consumption.
So I could go buy a bottle of wine from them and take it home?
That's what this would allow.
If you tried it and you were there, you liked it and they got 12 cases of it, you could buy three bottles and take it home with you. I get the idea and I think, you know, that was something I.
I'm intrigued by that.
I, I thought about it after and I was like, okay, well, wait a minute, the flag day, I mean, there's so many things that have happened like that where you could purchase something like that, whether it's at a fundraiser or at an event. And I think hopefully we didn't do it all wrong before, but at this event.
No, we didn't. We had, the vendor who was selling the alcohol had a package overlay.
Okay. And that's one of the questions that I had was, is if the other events that happen in town, that they don't have a license like this, they would be able to do that with the provider being able to hold the license for that? So if there was an event where.
It depends what kind of organization they are. It depends what the underlying license is. So right now, only A and D, and now we've added K.
We're going to, Lauren and I, in the new year, are hopefully.
We're going to clean this thing up.
Yeah, we're going to clean up the, we're going to clean up.
We don't need A through K.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to clean it up a little bit, hopefully make it easier for everyone involved.
Yes.
Because I am losing my mind over how many.
It's about every other week that we make a change to this?
Yeah, at this point, we, like, I, yeah. We're going to, we're going to take a holistic look at it and see what we actually are.
Not that complicated.
Yeah.
Oliver, what are those two?
It's gotten a little out of hand.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
I think it just, you know, as, as we've evolved and businesses are finding unique ways of trying to get their product. ways of trying to get their product out there, we're just changing with that.
I mean, I look at some of the businesses that we have in town that have paired up with each other or literally if you want to look like from Algonquin to Yorkville, how many breweries, how many food trucks, how many restaurants have paired together to do things that they normally wouldn't be able to do, but benefit both businesses or multiple businesses, where you can have three or four food trucks at one location at a time, or three or four businesses get together and share their products with each other as they open up or change location or whatever happens. I think this is a really kind of different dynamic time of how that has happened over the past few years. So I think it's something, especially if you have to go through and rewrite some of the rules, it would be easier and I think it's good for businesses to know what they can and can't do with the license that they have or license they may need. So that'll be good.
And if you all have any ideas or sort of specific visions you have for the revised code or whatever the revised thing looks like, share those ideas with Laura and I so we can start, you know, either researching, I'm looking into them and kind of understanding that this is going to be something that comes in '24. But if you've got, you know, specific issues, complaints, ideas, just put them our way. Thank you.
Just the one that takes like the downtown location and puts it in a box and says it's okay there.
Right.
That's the only other one I want.
Okay, so I will make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2364, amending the liquor code for the allowance of packaged liquor sales by a Class K license holder.
Oh, second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. That passes. Right, now we move on to item number eight, which is resolution 23135R, accepting public utility easements at 1252 Pearson Drive.
If it's okay with committee, I will go ahead and cover items eight and nine. Both of them have anything to do with 1252 Pearson Drive, an industrial property located in our northeast industrial park east of Kirk Road, a little bit north of our electric substation that sits out there. For those of you familiar with Superior Linens, this is the property that sits just north of Superior Linens. So during the course of construction, we did have to relocate a certain hydrant, fire hydrant, and then the water main, the associated water main. So this first resolution simply codifies the water main location as well as that new hydrant location in the form of a new public utility easement. And the second resolution is just acceptance of the public improvements, which they have now gone through their one-year maintenance requirement, and so they are ready to be accepted by the city.
Anybody have any questions? Pretty simple, easy stuff for once. Okay, I will make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution 23135R, accepting public utility easements at 1252 Pearson Drive.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Same thing on the next one, resolution 23133R, accepting public improvements at 1252 Pearson Drive.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Okay, that was easy. Now something a little bit deeper. Item number 10, discussion on Batavia electric load information.
I don't know how much council wants to, you know, have a formal presentation as opposed to this just being a discussion. I wasn't at the last council meeting when these comments were made. I happen to have been on vacation, but I did watch the BATV recording, so I tried to gather up all the questions that were asked that night and then get answers to them in this memo. You've all had the memo over the weekend to read it, so I could certainly walk through the memo if you want me to, or if you want to just start asking questions, whatever you guys would prefer, I'm open to.
Well, I guess I was the one that brought it up, so part of the reason why I brought it up is I know at some point we're going to have to have, and I know that you mentioned it in your memo around 2030, start having that discussion. Part of me is like, I feel like we need to start putting a plan together now and kind of understanding what that may be and definitely these graphs have been helpful and beneficial and the commentary that you put where, you know, our residential load is, is not, you know, a huge amount and there's many things that we have to take into consideration, but I, I truly feel that we need to start beginning to think of what we, you know, what we may need to encounter and this isn't something that I would see being solved tonight, but we need to prepare ourselves for, you know, where you talked about electric, you know, we talk about everybody switching over to electric and there's, as you said, there's like eight or 10 households to a circuit. A lot of families I'm speaking to, they're making this switch. And so I don't want to be caught off guard, you know, waiting until 2030 to be like, oh shoot, we, we have a lot more people that are switching over and, and kind of preparing for that and I don't know everything that goes involved with that or the cost involved with that, but, you know, I don't know if maybe now is the time that we start planning and saving for, like, do we do the very lowest amount of saying, we're putting this in? And then we also talk about programs to help people and we haven't even identified how we're going to fund that. So, you know, if we're going to be doing these programs, do we start now saying, okay, we're going to implement a quarter percent, and I don't know if that's the lowest amount that we can do, into a Batavia fund for these types of things? It'll help fund maybe the solar power or prepare to start switching some of our circuits over to hold these households as they switch over to electric, heat pumps and everything like that. Thank you for adding the potential cost in it because I've been wondering what that potential cost was. I just feel like we need to start a plan now. We know that we're stuck in this, but I'd rather be ahead of the game than all of a sudden, 10 years from now, saying to our residents, we need to up your amount by 3%, 4%, 5% to start planning for this if we start, if we can start doing a quarter percent now or something. That's, that's what drove it.
Okay, and that's perfect because there's actually three things in there that you've identified. One is resource planning for energy, renewable sources, new gas-powered sources, new coal power sources, whatever the case might be, that's one category. There's another whole category that you have in there and that is system infrastructure. And to that, I'll speak to that before we get to the third. The third category is programs and those are kind of a separate category all by themselves. Max spearheaded and he's been helping me, we have an application and I don't think we have heard back yet, but through, this is the very first step of already several planned steps, an application in for, what's the official title of the person?
Yeah, so what we're, yeah, what we're doing is Gary and I worked on submitting an application for the UIC Capstone program, something I did as I, when I was a student. But basically, we're going to have them start doing the initial stages of our infrastructure and looking at what electrification looks like and how, you know, as Gary said in his memo, it's like, we can't go all electric cars tomorrow, we'd blow every transformer in our system. So before we get to those sorts of things, and you'll see this within the strategic plan as well, and we're also hoping to go out and get some grants to support this research, we're trying to do the UIC study first. We're going to be cooperatively, probably applying for a grant as well that sort of builds on that and it goes to more of a comprehensive system infrastructure study. And I will hand it back.
That's, that's starting immediately. So the Capstone is already moving. The strategic plan will outline the fact that we, within the strategic plan, we have a goal established to do a comprehensive system study which speaks to infrastructure. That identifies what you were saying, that if our electric load doubles or our industrial load doubles, what infrastructure, what backbone do we need to make more robust in order to support that? That's a separate tract altogether from energy planning and energy resources. That tract needs to start and will start in 2024. So that's already going forward and that'll be going forward probably through 2034, probably through 2044. It's not going to happen overnight, but, but we need to begin that process. That's already been really on our radar, I mean, kind of behind the scenes for all of you. It's already been on our radar. Once we had Steve Allen join our staff a year ago, Steve began to track a lot of things that had not been tracked previously and he's gone back in time and gathered up more information. So he is now keeping track. Every time we get a solar application, every time we get an EV charger application, he's, he's now plotting those things. So suddenly we have 10 EV chargers all on, you know, one area. We know we might have an issue in that area. So he's already started to track all that. So we've, we've already, the last year since Steve got here, we've already been on this, this quest to look at our infrastructure. So that's, that, I agree with you and I didn't really touch on that much in this, in this memo, just from listening to the comments and not being here, I kind of.
I said that day, so it's.
Because I was hearing your comments more along the lines of resource planning.
Right.
And, you know, at this stage in 2023, in order to do resource planning, I kind of listed several of the, several of the factors here, you know, our load history, our load growth, market forecast, that's natural gas, coal, energy, renewables, nuclear, whatever, whatever might be in the market, generation ownership versus whatever contracts might be, different fuel sources, transmission issues, what the balance of our portfolio is, and frankly, we don't know a lot of those things. What are they going to be in 2033? What are they going to be in early 2040s when our, when our Prairie State contract expires? We don't know a lot of that stuff. So for us to start planning on that now, we'd be working with a whole lot of variables that are unknown. What we can do and what councils have already done is establish goals, you know, so that you get zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. That's maybe all you need to do right now and you, you say that when, as the time gets closer and all those other variables come into focus, we need to plan to meet those goals. So infrastructure is one thing, resource planning is a second thing, and then as far as programs go, we do have $100,000 in next year's budget towards starting the solar program. That's just one start of one aspect. We get phone calls from people all the time, do you guys offer a refrigerator rebate program? Do you guys offer an electric stove program? Our response is, one, we don't charge you for that and two, no, we don't offer the program. I'm a ComEd customer, I probably pay fees every single month for those programs and over my now 30 years of being a ComEd customer, one time I've gotten a $25 rebate for my refrigerator. I'll tell you, I've paid a lot more than $25 over the years for that refrigerator. So we don't charge our customers for those programs and we don't offer those programs. I would imagine a customer who wants to take advantage of those programs on a regular basis, they would prefer that we would offer them. But if you're a customer like me who doesn't take advantage of those plans, I'm glad we don't offer them, so.
Yeah, I guess one of the things that I thought about was, you know, exactly the, how do we track or how do we start to prepare for, okay, when we hit, you know, 10 car chargers at 40 amps apiece on one circuit, when do we make that decision that that circuit has to be upgraded?
That's where engineers are.
When do we know that we have to have another transformer? I mean, I start thinking about, you know, okay, if it's a neighborhood and it's 168 new houses that are out there and they all have 100 amp service or they all have 200 amps.
200, yeah.
How, how much of that has to be dedicated or have to, you have to think about dedicating to the car charger, to a solar hookup or whatever happens to be in that neighborhood? So that way, one, when that is the eventuality that it becomes, how do you handle that? Where, where does that have to be put into your rate structure, you know, your plans for when you have to replace transformers, when you're going to have to replace underground lines, all of the things that the utility has to do today, but doesn't have the added pressure of, okay, we're mandated that we're going to have to have this many percentage of electric cars sold or that this percentage of houses have to have solar, whatever, whatever the regulations become in the future or the reality becomes, how do we, where do we set those thresholds and how do we achieve those?
That's the process I spoke of, that's probably not going to happen overnight. It's going to be probably over the course of several decades. But like the Siemens property, for example, we've had concept plans for that property. That property still needs to come back to you for any real detailed discussions, but as we've been thinking about that property, especially in the context of the new state law that requires EV-ready parking spaces, we're already thinking, you know, where's, previously there was eight houses with a transformer, like I said in my memo, we're already thinking that as that gets developed, we're going to probably add almost double the number of transformers in there. That'll be paid for by the developer upfront, which means it'll be paid for by the homeowners upfront. But yeah, and then, but that same scenario will play out eventually in the subdivisions that were built in the 1990s, who then convert to EV chargers and that's going to play out over the course of the next several decades and it all starts back with our Capstone study.
And meanwhile, it all feeds into, will be affected by, that at the federal level that there is such a scarcity for transformers that, you know, we've got to factor that in too, that even if we budgeted for the number of transformers that we needed, right now it doesn't look like there will be enough available.
We have already notified the potential developer that if that property goes forward, they will not be constructing until 2025 at the earliest.
And all electric utilities are looking at this same problem throughout the state, throughout the nation. It's a real problem.
And we, we've spoke back in the CJ days about our nation's, our nation's grid. Our nation's grid is not set up, was never historically set up for distributed generation. It was set up for one large generator and then 500 miles away, another large generator and then another 500 miles away, another large generator. That's how our nation's grid was set up. You're talking trillions of dollars to rebuild our nation's grid to transition to distributed generation. That's again, decades and decades in the making.
I know that our budget is really, you know, set up as we've talked about maintaining our current electrical grid and, and knowing that there are these additional transformers that need to be, for me, I'm like, I want to make sure that we're set up to where not only can we maintain it, but if we know that a certain area has a large number of solar that we can increase, you know, we have that, those funds there to where you're not like, well, what do we do? Do we?
Yeah, we haven't been, I hear what you're saying and we haven't been to a point in the electric utility where we can't do a capital project because we don't have the funding for it. We haven't raised rates since 2015, but with our purchase power costs having come down, we've been able to still do $3 million plus dollars a year in capital spending for programs. Plus remember over the last eight years now, our salaries have increased, our materials have increased, everything has increased, but we still managed to maintain rates. But to your point though, we're not keeping rates at the expense of lowering reserves or at the expense of not doing capital. Our, our rates have stayed the same and our reserves have stayed healthy and our capital spending has remained healthy to improve the system. Yes, to your point, we do not want to get to a point where we start to struggle in not being able to do capital projects because we don't have enough revenue coming in. I don't think we're there yet, but it is, it is always on our radar and, and we need to keep an eye on that and that shock absorber is our reserves. And when you start to see those reserves trickling downward, that's when we say, nope, we need to get more revenue in order to, to maintain those reserves.
And the other thing we're keeping in mind is the discussion that came out during the budget of doing smaller incremental increases to the rates versus waiting for a period of time and saying, all of a sudden, we have to make a big.
That's why I'm like, do we do a quarter percentage and consider that for, knowing 2050, we're probably going to have a significant cost with having to switch things. Is it better for us now, and, and I'm just throwing it out, at some point, and we don't, again, we don't have to make the decision tonight or have that, but maybe over the next year, kind of come back and keep debating and like, do we do a small?
You do a 1% increase, do a 2%. That's what we've done.
To start doing that, to prepare it.
Exactly. That's what we did with, you all recognize now because you've been paying them for year after year, but your water and your sewer rate increases, 3%, 8% have been going on now almost for a decade between water and sewer. And it's just a similar thing, you know, maybe you start implementing a 1% or 2% annual electric increase so that you don't have to go five years down the road and then have a 10% increase. You can just do it 22222 and it's a lot easier on everybody.
And I think we have to make sure that we keep an eye on it and we're ready to at any point say, okay, we know now, five years from now or 10 years from now, we're going to have to do a massive increase in what we have to do with, with our structure and our, or the infrastructure. and the, you know, what we have to deal with for expansion or, you know, changing the way the system works. And be ready for that. Again, 1% every year for five years is a lot easier for people, I think, to handle than 5% once in five years. That becomes a difference, especially when we're, we don't know what the prices of electric are going to be at that point. You know, what the market is going to be and what our costs are going to be. And then when we shut the plant down, that's going to have a cost to it. And when we switch over to whether it's market-based contracts every year or every day or whatever they end up being, it might be a completely different world then. So I think we have to be ready and be looking at it on a constant basis until we get to that point.
And the strategic plan, which would include that system study, that's going to say, okay, you've got five years remaining life on this. You've got 10 years remaining life on that. I use the analogy of the water system study that we did back in 2015, 2016. And that really outlaid 10 years, 10 to 15 years of capital for the water that we've been following. And we just finished the water treatment plant upgrades, which were identified back in 2016. And we started, you know, rate increases for those way back then. That's the same thing you're talking about is have a system study in place that identifies future projects that we can then build a rate structure to support. Peggy and I talk about electric rates at least a couple of times every year about whether we need to right now be raising them or not. It's certainly on our radar. We don't want to raise them if we don't have to, obviously.
Gary, a handful of comments and questions and no particular orders. Could you clarify that the capstone project with UIC and then the other studies that we're going to do, does that include solar readiness for the city or solar implications for our infrastructure? Or is that just electrification?
Well, so the capstone study would look at the impacts of generation on a home. When homes, if you get a whole, just like the example Alderman Wolf just said, if you have 10 EV chargers all in one block, there are 10 loads, okay? That's a concern. But if you have 10 solar generators all in one block, that's 10 generators also a concern. So it's both sides of the equation.
Okay, that's great. Cover both. I wanted to address the comment in your memo about, and you just mentioned the Siemens property and new developments and addressing electrification and stronger electrification codes in our code book for new developments, which I wholeheartedly support and would like to have a conversation about what that process looks like to put stronger codes into our books. But then also don't want us to focus solely on that. As we talk about Batavia being 90, what, 90% built out, 95% built out? And to actually meet any of the objectives, any new standards, we're going to have to address our existing building stock. So working towards the programs you were mentioning, I just wanted to make that comment that it will be easier to do that for new buildings moving forward and so we should do that. But it's not going to move the needle nearly as much as we need it to. And it's funny you say the federal shortage of transformers because there's so many federal incentives right now for folks to go electric.
Exactly.
It's frustrating.
Is it, Gary, I mean, is it just the fact that they're just not being produced here? Or is it just that there aren't enough companies making them?
Well, when the supply chain got all screwed up during COVID, so when the supply chain got all screwed up during COVID, your large investor-owned utilities across the nation, so these are your ComEds and your Amerins, and then multiply your Commerins and Amerins times 50 states, they all went on a buying spree. And so ComEd has plenty of transformers, but the industry as a whole can't get transformers because they've all been brought up by large distribution and transmission companies. It's no different than automobile availability or any other parts, fire truck availability. It's not that they're not producing them, it's just that they can't produce them quick enough.
I just also wanted to mention that I fully support Jennifer's idea of that incremental increase. And then to another point in your memo, it'll probably come more into discussion when we're talking about programs. But, you know, weighing the pros and cons of promoting residential electrification, you know, outside of the cost to the city, what do you see, Gary, as the cons of doing that? I've got a long list in my notes of all the pros of doing that. And I also just wanted to comment that the, you know, the typical house forward household is not going to be able to afford $15,000 to $20,000 to electrify their home because nobody is going to do their whole home at one time. You know, this is a replace as needed. My dryer went out, I'm going to replace it with an electric one. When my furnace goes out, I'm going to replace it with a heat pump, understanding that each one of those might have a little bit of an incremental increase over the standard model. But that's where some of the incentives come in. The state and federal incentives come in to try and equalize that, to do the right thing and move towards what we need to do. So anyway, then I'll go back to my question of, other than the cost to the city that we're studying and we know we're going to have to do eventually because this is the way that the world is moving, other than that cost, what do you see as the cons to electrification?
I don't know if there's any cons, it's just a cost issue.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I definitely agree. If we go that route to go incremental increases, I think the key to that is transparency and actually kind of marketing that to a sense. Just in terms of, hey, we're going to start taking your money and here's what we're going to do with it. Hey, we're being good stewards of the money. This is thought out. I think that goes over, you know, I don't mind. I wouldn't mind as a constituent, like, okay, that's where my money's going. That's, I'm okay with that. Rather than you have a 5%, 6% increase in one year. Like, oh, nice, nice planning, council or whatever, right? That's the thought. So I think that's something we market, the fact that we're having the conversation. And thank you for bringing it up. Because that's the type of forethought or foresight that I think, you know, our constituents want. So, you know.
Mark? One of the things we really need to keep in mind too is we keep on talking about electrification and trying to get rid of some of the greenhouse gases. But the, so the number one cost of your electric and gas is heating and cooling your home. And the best way to reduce that and actually avoid having to have more electricity and gas is if people better insulate their homes. To electrify everything, I think the figure is we'd have to have seven times the electrical generation that we have right now. So it's, that's an impossible or improbable thing to get to because that goes to the trillions of dollars that need to be spent. So we need to find a way to encourage people to use less electricity by retrofitting their homes. I mean, it's going to make a much bigger difference than trying to get everybody to go electric because it's going to be very hard. And ComEd did not have transformers. My friend's house was delayed by six months because ComEd didn't have a transformer. It was built and it was ready to move into and he couldn't move into it because it was still running off a generator. So it's a real thing.
Interesting problem. Since 2012, if not sooner, not earlier. It's always been a problem for the city of Batavia since I've been here, certainly since, again, 2012. Utilities traditionally promote conservation because they don't want to have to purchase more generation. And by promoting conservation, it helps customers because customers conserve. They lower their energy bills. It helps the utility because the utility has less energy to go out and purchase. It's a nice symbiotic relationship. We don't have that in Batavia. That's the problem. And it's always been a challenge for our town. But what you speak of is what really the next generation needs to be thinking about. Insulate your homes, get energy-efficient electric appliances, energy-efficient appliances, so that ultimately, and I did make a reference in here to LED bulbs. We've seen it. I mean, the changeover has just naturally occurred organically. We never promoted LED bulbs, whereas many utilities were. But it's just occurred organically because you go to the Home Depot, you can't buy a light bulb anymore, an old light bulb. You can only buy LED light bulbs now. And those have just, you can see it in the numbers. I mean, they've decreased our load. Yeah, that is what we need to ultimately do. And it's always been a frustration that we can't promote that because we can't promote that.
But it's kind of, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted, I agree with Mark. I had experienced lately with our furnace was giving us problems. The heat exchanger went out. And so called the furnace guy and who are friends of mine. And I got to thinking, well, the air conditioner we got's 25 years old. Let's explore heat pump. And it's just not there yet to be in this climate. You know, 30 degrees is what a heat pump will heat your home with at this time. However, in doing that research, we're looking into this a lot. There is stuff coming down the pike with efficiency and heat pumps that are, that will go to minus seven. And that was part of the Inflation Reduction Act, was to challenge the manufacturers to come up with these, you know, more efficient heat pumps. So it's coming down, but we're not there yet. And so what my wife and I decided, well, we're fortunately carriers on the hook to pay for a big part of the cost of the heat exchange because they went with cheap materials. But it's an older furnace, but if we were going to switch to a heat pump, we would have, still had to have a gas furnace and still had to, you know, it was not cost effective to do it at this time. So we started looking at, well, you know, we have put new windows in, but insulating better. And I think, you know, people will get more bang for your buck. It won't help us sell in more electricity in Batavia, but it's the right way to go.
I know of four people in Batavia that switched when their AC went out. They switched to a heat pump because it can run your home AC. And then their furnace is there for those couple of days.
Yeah.
Less and less these years that it goes under 30 degrees.
Yeah, I would have both, the furnace and the heat pump. And I'm like, ah.
You could do electric baseboard too as a supplemental. I've heard that. Get rid of your furnace altogether.
Interestingly, in Norway, my wife's from Norway, and they heat their homes with all electricity and heat pumps. These dual splits are everywhere. But they also have snow melt out of the mountains all year and produce all their electricity with hydroelectric dams and.
Boiler and hydronic systems are huge in Europe too, which of course, the early generations of America, United States, we had tons of boilers. You go back to the, you know, and all that, all the trades who worked on those boilers have all kind of disappeared because boilers went out of fashion in this country. But they're still very much used in Europe. And that's another way to do electric boiler and running water through baseboards.
Well, the math wouldn't work out as nicely, I don't think, between conservation and electrification. And, you know, like it did with our, when we were looking at the number of solar customers and the number of EV customers and the kilowatt hours used, you know, we're almost awash, like, yeah, a lot of people went solar and we were really worried, everybody's going to go solar, all of our rates are going to go up. But enough people went electric that it really canceled itself out. So it is, I think it's a yes and, both and. We have to promote both and just hope that the numbers stay in line with each other to not, you know, one outweigh the other until we, until 2050, whatever, and we have other options.
I think we just have to keep reminding ourselves that we have to take advantage of whatever opportunities there. If it is presented and forced upon us by regulations that change or by technology that changes. I'm, as I've researched this in the last year or so, I'm not totally convinced that we're going to end up with all electric cars. Hydrogen generators, hydrogen-powered vehicles is really starting to take some traction. And if that happens, that could change the whole, you know, comments and the change in the electrical grid because we wouldn't be reliant on that. Now, that will also make us, I think in 10 or 15 years, be fighting over water if that really occurs to the scale that it might just because it's a much simpler system and it's a much easier thing to do than mine everything that we need to have batteries in cars. You know, even with the fact you could have the electric motor in the car and have a hydrogen generator that creates electricity in the vehicle.
And I want to just add, I have been invited to attend, and I have, excuse me, I have been invited to attend, and which I did, there's a hydrogen proposal to build a plant in Northern Kane County. And the county is actively involved in the idea with it. They want to get it between two different railroad tracks. And I think one of the ideas they're going to do is they want to build a bunch of vehicles that are going to be powered by hydrogen versus gas or anything else. And so there's a lot of people spend a lot of time. It's up in the Elgin area where this is being proposed. And so I think it may be on its way.
And the research and the stuff that I've seen come out of Australia and stuff on hydrogen-powered vehicles is pretty enticing what they're working on right now.
I may not be around in the 2040s or hopefully I'm around. But hopefully I'm not here in the 2040s. All I can do is, before I leave this memo, is encourage the city council at that time to, again, take into account every single factor. I know from reading through the materials and I know from talking to people that such an emphasis was placed on, we must own, we must own, we must own, that virtually all other factors were dismissed or minimized to get us to the situation where we are today. I would just encourage council not to latch on to one factor and discount all the other factors. Even if one factor is very important, you really need to keep track of everything else. And there's only one word that we all need to remember, two words. Balanced portfolio, which we do not have today. So that's a big thing. We're going to grow into it though.
Yep. Thank you. You've been waiting all night. You want to speak now, Susan? Come on up. Figured you weren't here just to listen.
I know. And I'm sure all of you understand that I have a slightly different perspective. World governments, the military, corporations and individuals are making changes to meet the demands of our climate crisis. The memo that is being discussed tonight puts the question before you in stark terms. Is Batavia going to change with the rest of the world or is Batavia going to take a wait and see approach? There are many Batavians residents who believe that wait and see is the wrong approach. We believe there are enough Batavia residents, business owners and civic leaders who believe that Batavia has the strength and ability to start making changes now. We believe that Batavia can and should be a leader in this changing world. The burning of fossil fuels has to stop, period. This means that clean energy sources and electricity are going to play greater roles in our everyday lives. As you mentioned with hydrogen, maybe that's going to be another option. But electricity is going to play a significant role in the future. Is city council willing to make the changes that will allow this to happen in a way that makes transition as smooth as possible? The memo presented to you tonight explicitly states that if each Batavia home almost doubled its load, the city would need to double its number of transformers and associated wire and conduit. It's a fact. Every home in Batavia will be increasing its electric load in the future. It is our duty or it is your duty as our representatives to direct city staff to make plans for more transformers, wire and conduit now and start installing those transformers, wire and conduit before the inevitable demand is made on the city's electric system. The memo also documents the cost that homeowners will incur as they move toward electrification. But it completely ignores the thousands of dollars in rebates and tax credits that are available right now and in the future under the Inflation Reduction Act. How many Batavia, how can Batavia help its homeowners access these dollars as they electrify their homes? Are there other incentives, programs and rebates that Batavia can offer to enhance these IRA benefits and make electrification even more widely available to Batavia residents? What can city council do to help Batavians understand that the investments they make in electrification will actually have long-term health and financial benefits? With regard to electrifying new construction through the modification of building codes and development codes, the memo is filled with innuendo and speculation. Where is the data that shows that cities that have adopted new codes to promote electrification have become less competitive? Where is the data that shows the? Where is the data that shows the effect of electrification on the cost of that new home or the rent for that new apartment? Where is the data that proves that renters and homeowners will refuse to pay higher rent or home prices for electrification? Why are consumers currently buying heat pumps and electric cars even though they are more expensive? Finally, the memo states that Batavia already has times when it consumes more electricity than it purchases through NMPA. As climate change increases its foothold in our lives, won't we be using more electricity to cool our buildings? Not less. This fact and the move to electrification present opportunities for Batavia to purchase electricity from clean energy sources to supplement the supply from NMPA. Doesn't it make sense to make plans now for the purchase of this clean energy rather than waiting until the last moment when choices might be limited? I believe this memo proves one thing, that city staff is not seeking ways to make electrification work. Batavia needs an evaluation of its electric system and future energy sources by an unbiased, independent expert. This evaluation confirm what is working in the system, provide directions on how and when changes to infrastructure and energy sources should be implemented, and how costs for these changes can be managed. An unbiased, independent expert can see opportunities where they are currently being overlooked. Evaluation by an expert needs to be done now. Batavia cannot wait until it is too late and opportunities are lost to inactivity and the fear of change. And I want to just make one mention with regard to the Capstone program. My son was a UIC Capstone scholar. That is an undergraduate program or a graduate program. All right. They are students who do not have experience generally in the work world. It is not a substitute for a comprehensive expert plan, somebody with years of experience and with a breadth of knowledge that this city needs in terms of structure, infrastructure, energy sources, the whole shebang. And while it's a laudable program, and it certainly helps those students become better employees for somebody somewhere, it is not the answer to all of your planning problems, I don't believe. So that's, I wanted to just convey that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just kind of a response. I think that you're stating what we would like to do, maybe in a little bit different way or a different timeframe. And I think from our standpoint, or at least my standpoint on this, being the only one that's still here from when we got into Prairie State, I think that we have to keep an open mind and we have to keep, I'll say, moving forward. And we know the eventuality of where we think we're going. And I really believe that anything that's out there that we can take advantage of to move us in that direction or to get us to the point where we think we're doing a better job of moving forward and away from fossil fuels is a good thing for the city. And, you know, I really have to say, I appreciate what you've done and the things that you've brought to the council or brought to the public. And I think that there are, especially as we move forward in this, I think there's going to be more people involved from everywhere within the city, whether it's an industrial user, whether it's, you know, the first time homeowner or whatever. I think we're going to see a lot more interest in that as the world evolves in this. And whatever we end up with for generation, electrification, however we move forward, it's going to, it's going to take a lot more resources than what we've put into it over the past decade or two. So, you know, it will definitely be a different world in 20 or 30 years. So, you know, I mentioned all the time that I think we'll be fighting over water more and more than we're fighting over anything else, because I think that's going to be the one commodity that we don't have 10 different ways to generate it. You know, there's a couple of ways to get it and a couple of ways to distribute it, and that's about it. And, you know, even just the simple thing of, I think of how many millions or trillions of gallons of water go out every year in a plastic bottle? You know, and the reality of that is what we've demanded to be able to have portability so that we can get our Gatorade, or we could get Pepsi, or we can have water, whatever it is, that's what the public's demanding. And, you know, we put ourselves in the situation that we're in, and now we have to figure out how we move forward and if we can, stay ahead of it. So I think it's important, and I think it's important that we do have people from the public that want to be involved in this. Honestly, I could see a commission with more input and more time to dig into these things than the 14 of us have here with everything else that's included in the budgets and the discussions we have, you know, week in and week out every year. So I think it's really important that we don't let up on this and that we do keep moving forward as quickly as we can because we're going to have to be ready for it and we're going to have to be able to pay for it.
Can I make a comment?
I was just thinking that probably something very valuable along with, Gary has just a tremendous knowledge of our own situation, this electric utility, all of the history of the situation. But perhaps we can have someone come in to talk to us about the energy industry and what an expert sees on the horizon in the energy industry. Gary, I'm thinking about the person who we listened to his presentations through the Metropolitan Mayor's Council, and maybe some of you had attended some of the sessions of that as well.
Mark Pruitt.
Yeah, Mark Pruitt.
Could I also suggest maybe we get an expert in conservation and building? There's a member, he's not a member of the Environmental Commission, but he's been attending some of the meetings, is a Batavia resident.
Oh, if you could pass along the contact, that'd be great.
And then also someone that could talk about programs that municipalities are rolling out in terms of conservation, electrification, those kind of, those ideas that we might not be thinking of.
Because I think a lot of times too, even just a simple thing of going to go out by an electric car, and, you know, depending on what it is and what model and how it's charged, you may have to have a separate 50 amp circuit in your house that's dedicated to that, or you don't run your air conditioning while you're charging your car. You know, the realities of that, I don't think the general public has that knowledge. And it would be something good that, you know, as we move towards that stuff, we have a way to inform the public, hey, this is what it's going to take. And if you don't have this in your house, this is what you're going to have to do. And, you know, that's the reality of if you want to own that, if you want to get rid of everything and have two electric cars, you're going to have to plan that out.
If you don't want to put an electric charger in your home, or you're procrastinating on it, then you just run for city council and you plug in right outside once a week, like I have been doing the past.
Or you put solar panels on your house and you use that circuit, part of that circuit to charge your car with.
Just to clarify though, Councilwoman Beck is paying for that electric car. It is, it's not free.
Yeah.
No, and it is expensive. Can I tell you? I'll show you my app.
In the specific context of programs, we've always said, staff has always said that we don't have the horsepower in-house or the expertise in-house to run any type of program. So that has always been contemplated to be a third-party effort, that the city would, the city would, you know, have a broad picture, but all the, all the expertise and all the administration, it's going to have to be an outside person. We've always said that from the beginning.
And even just to be able to provide the links that are out there to, for federal programs.
The state ones.
It literally takes somebody, one person to do that.
I'm on the board.
We've done zero research, but, and maybe Abby can help, there's got to be tons of people out there who do that for a living.
Right.
And have been doing that for a living for decades, because those programs aren't new. So it's just a matter of the city coming.
Right. Getting it together and being able to get that out, that information out there to people because that is something, I mean, it's.
We've never contemplated doing that in-house. The study that's part of our strategic plan, or at least represented in our strategic plan, which hasn't been budgeted for, but that'll be one of the things that, go ahead, Max.
Yeah, I was gonna, I wanted to provide a little bit more background on how these, how the UIC Capstone combined with the grant and the strategic plan, infrastructure study, all are designed to work together. The Capstone is not designed to be the full study. It's designed to do a lot of the early work, reviewing the power purchase agreement, reviewing our infrastructure, reviewing outages, coming up with some baseline data. And then we are going to apply for a grant through the Illinois Municipal Utility Association. One of the things they have in, so it's $40 million, 48% match from the locality, so it would fund a significant portion of what we're hoping to do with obviously an outside external consultant for the whole study that's much more official. And one of the opportunities for the grant is for projects that address the resiliency needs of a community and are driven by local planning efforts. Grants could include providing seed money for early-stage planning, such as hiring engineering firms to do a comprehensive look at a system to determine the necessary projects to build resilience in a community. So that's how the UIC Capstone is designed to do the front work. It's free. It's good work. I went through it. I know what we're going to be supervising them and what we expect out of them. The work product is very good for what it is. Then we use that data, that research, to use it for the grant application, which if we can get 50, roughly 50% of that funded via a grant, to do a comprehensive infrastructure study that reduces the amount that we have to budget for, but we're still getting the work done. So it's thinking sequentially how that Capstone provides the data that then is allowing us to apply for that grant, which then allows us to do the study, which you'll see in the strategic plan. So all those things are working together to get at the exact things you want, these long-term plans for our grid, for programs. And I'm happy to send you all the RFP that we submitted, but it includes things like trends with electric vehicles and solar, includes things like where have our outages been due to things that are involving climate change, whether it's more storms, more severe storms, flooding, whatever that may be. That then is designed to directly tie into what the grant criteria is. So they're designed to work together and set us down that path so we aren't using as much money as we, we're getting some help in doing so.
And analogous to the water system study, which was done by Engineering Enterprises, again, back in 2015, 2016, the electric system study would be envisioned to be something similar, where we would have a Burns and McDonald or a Sergeant Lundey, some engineering firm come in, because that's who you really need, is electrical engineers, power distribution engineers, to look at your system and identify, you know, how can the system be made more resilient, and how can the system adapt to future changes? So it'll be some outside firm that'll come in and do this study, just like we had EEI come in and do it, and Jeremy Barki is extremely qualified, Steve Allen is extremely qualified. But for these types of studies, they're beyond just what staff does.
I think we have some opportunities, you know, as we grow and develop these, this information and resources, you know, on our own website, create, you know, for residents to go to. I know that the CAP committee has worked on some ideas, but maybe we can negotiate with Main Street and have one of the Boardwalk shops set up as, you know, here are some different things that you can do to electrify your home, whether it be solar panels or things that are within the Boardwalk shop that people can see. Because I think, as I've said, I'm a very visual person, so for me to sit here and read through stuff, I'm like, I glaze over, but if I were to go in and see it in action, I can't read that more.
Maybe that third-party company that would come in, the city would rent that Boardwalk shop or whatever for the year, probably 2025, the third-party company would come in then and host that site on behalf of the city. So they would go in and so Mr. Smith or Mrs. Smith show up there, they can actually talk to, you know, are there any federal rebates that I can get for this? Yes, there are. That's where, we don't have that expertise in-house, but that's where that third-party company would be one of their avenues for getting public education out there.
As many customers as we have, that's going to be the reality, is we're going to have to figure out how, whatever changes and things that happen moving in the future, how do we get one, buy-in from the public, and two, how do we affect the actual change and get them to understand what they're going to need to do or what they're going to be forced to do, whatever the reality is at that point? That's not something that any of us, you know, we're not going to go each pick a Saturday and go down there and sit there and do that. That's going to be something we're going to have to have outside help with.
Between Max and myself and Laura and Steve Allen, literally every grant opportunity that has come along in the last few months, we've all looked at all those grants to see what can be applied for and what can't be applied for. I think we all need to recognize that much of the funding is intended for environmental justice communities, which we're not going to qualify for, and rightly so. I mean, there's communities who've been neglected in this country for decades, so a lot of the money is being directed towards those communities, which is great. But there, just because we may not qualify for some grants, doesn't mean we won't qualify for others, like the one Max was just talking about. And so we are constantly watching for grant funds that we might qualify for.
You know what road we're going, we just don't know which off-ramp we take.
Six months, have the conversation again?
Right.
Probably before that.
Yeah, and I think it's something that it's important.
Because we're going to be bringing it up as part of strategic planning.
And I think that that's something that we have to remember is, just like with strategic planning, this is something that is basically our electric utility strategic plan, and we have to keep talking about it. And we have to hold ourselves accountable to keep moving forward.
The system study's not in the 24 budget, but hopefully after we go through the strategic plan, we can talk about that, adding plus multiple other things out of the strategic plan that need to be budgeted for ourselves.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll move to item 11, which is ordinance 2366, mending the municipal code relating to electric rates for customers over 50 million kilowatt-hours annually.
Well, this is actually a memo created by Peggy, but some of you may not know, we actually, for our largest customer, we have an agreement with them allowing for some market-based rates plus some regular bundled rates. That market-based rate agreement reverts back to bundled rates effective on January 1st, 2024. And that agreement is a little generic in its language in it, it says, reverts back to the rates in place at the time. And so it doesn't tell you what rate it's reverting back to, it just says, in place at the time. And although our rates are all in place right now, we felt it would be, help to further clarify that within this specific section, we reiterate the same rates that are reiterated elsewhere in our code, but this just helps to further codify it and further make it clear as to the rates in place at this time are going to be these rates, which are what all of our rates are. So that's all this ordinance does.
Basically, the other rates that they're paying at the other portions or the other buildings that they have would then be the same thing they'd be paying at all of their places now.
Yeah, they, well, those are still under market rates, so they have, they have both. They're complicated. We do a whole separate billing just for them. But yes, this portion of their bill is going to revert back to what you see in the ordinance.
Yeah, quick question. How many companies is this going to affect? And what's the, come January 1st, what's the heart attack level on their next bill? Like, are they aware of this? Are they know it's coming? Okay.
This is long-standing. And that one company, well, just their market-based portion is 6% of our load. They actually have the large general service over 50 million, which is another 13% of our load, 14. So all told, that one company is about 20%, 21% of our load. Can't believe it's been 10 years already.
And I can tell you, I can't run in, or I don't ever have an experience with this company, if the president's there specifically, that he doesn't remind me of this deal with the city.
They're well aware of it.
Yeah. Well, and you think of, you know, they also have, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of square feet that they have in West Chicago, literally across the street. And, you know, we'll see what happens with them when they, when they start paying the ComEd rates as those go up. Because I think, do we think that that's going to be eclipsing our rate prices?
Their claim, their claim is solar, that that whole campus is.
That whole campus on the DuPage County side is, is solar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we got solar on the roof out there.
Right, I know that they do, but I didn't know that that entire one was. I thought they. I thought they also had it in the grid.
They, they have a big sign out there.
That's off-grid.
But that's more distribution, I think it's not.
Yeah, I think it's distribution, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have one, they have a megawatt of solar on their roof in Batavia.
But they, they don't have any production in West Chicago, right? It's all warehousing.
My understanding is they don't have production in West Chicago. I think it's all just warehouse and distribution over there.
Yeah. What?
Okay, so if we have no other questions, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 2366, amending the municipal code relating to electric rates for customers over 50 million kilowatt-hours annually.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Serone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Aye.
Okay, that agrees. And also, I believe Alderman Vogelsinger left about 8:20, or 8:15? Okay. Now we move on to.
Just let me make one historical anecdote here. Whenever, anytime you deal with that company, and the son of the gentleman, he quickly reminds you that this whole thing started in a storefront in downtown Cicero, where his father had a plastic excrusion molding machine, and they got tied up with Art Linkletter and started making the hula hoop for American consumption in 1957. And that's where the company started, making hula hoops in Cicero in the storefront. So people do grow, it's a classic example.
Now I don't think there's an outdoor product that they don't make. You know, I mean, it's amazing.
Yeah, I don't see hula hoops anymore.
Yeah. Not out of that factory.
Move beyond the hula hoop.
Okay, we'll move to item number 12, which is project status.
Sure. At the, this past weekend was the toy drive distribution, and then they'll also have another follow-up distribution for families who couldn't come on Sunday this coming Wednesday. But I attended the Batavia Women in Business Holiday Luncheon today, and the Baileys were there and shared with us that it was a very successful year, that they assisted 191 families this year distributing toys to them. So thank everyone here and also the community in general for their generosity with that toy drive. We also had this past week our Shop with a Cop event, which both the police department and also the fire department participated. And Deputy Chief Mike Johnson attended a two-day seminar on special event enhanced risk management and assessment. It's a program that's put on through FEMA at the Aurora Police Department, and the class contained a lot of valuable information and insight into public safety solutions for making our special events as safe as possible. And then in Public Works, I just wanted to share with you some new technology that we're using this year to monitor weather and the pavement conditions. We've installed some cameras in different points with, throughout the city, and they allow supervisors to visually monitor the condition of our roadways. And the sensors provide data such as pavement surface temperature, subsurface temperature, and ice and snow coverage, and it works in conjunction with a new weather monitoring system, forecasting system that we have. So hopefully that will allow us to be more proactive. And I think the Streets Department already does a fabulous job of keeping our streets clear, but this allows them to be even more proactive. And then in IT, IT hosted a training event for Cognos. It is a software that is associated with our financial system, and it allows for people from HR or finance and IT to create customized reports. So it allows us to use the data more efficiently and for other purposes. So that class was held this past week as well. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Just to kind of add this, what's the schedule moving forward with the permitting process consultant and review?
It's underway. So the, the consultant has been hired and they're having meetings with folks. I know that over the past two weeks, they've had meetings with several internal employees that are part of the process. So for instance, Gary, I think they talked to the engineers, is that correct? Yeah. So they'll reach out to external folks as well, and I think a number of you will be contacted for interviews.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure what, you know, they foresee doing interviews for two more months, two more weeks, two more days, or, you know, what the timeframe is of when things will progress.
I can ask Scott that question tomorrow, and then I'll, I'll provide you with an answer on that. I'm not quite sure about what the timeline is for the different phases of the project.
Thank you.
It was an interesting interview.
Yeah. I think it has been very beneficial that one of the individuals working on the project actually helped a temporary position within the department, and so she's quite knowledgeable about what the process is.
Can I, can I add one more thing about, since Alderman Serone just asked a question? We have been asked several times here in the last few days by people calling up or coming into the desk, and then I generally get to call, people want to know, where is Batavia's most colorful Christmas display? And I guess I approve the town, and I guess I would tell you that it's probably down in your neighborhood at the corner of Redant Road and Ekman Drive. And it's been there before, but not to the degree that we've taken it to this year. I don't know what that guy's electric bill must be.
Oh, LEDs.
That's probably LEDs.
Yeah.
It's probably a lot less than it was five years ago.
Yeah, probably is, but it's quite a show, so I encourage you all to take a ride down there and take a look at it. It's just down the street from the junior high, about six blocks or so on the west side of the street, on the corner at Ekman and Redant. Can't miss it once you get there.
And I know that that's.
Saw it over the weekend.
It's one of them that's on one of the news channels in town in Chicago, that they're one of the, I don't know, five locations or whatever, that they're in a contest for, you know, best decorations, so.
Yeah, it's the Christmas light fight, I think the show is called.
Yeah, it's funny, because I think of the one that Larson's had up on, was at their house, and they literally recreated the house, put it over at Gobert's on the farm there. So there's this, looks like the back of a movie set when you drive by it with no lights on. And then to see it at night, it's insane. You know, I mean, that's, I know they ran special electric out into the middle of the field for that and be able to set that up and run it, but it's pretty amazing.
What's the cost of getting it in, $20?
I think it's $20.
It was $20, I know, when it was out there in Beast Road. I don't know if they've increased the cost or not.
I'm sure the King County Police Department and everything is happy with that, or Sheriff's Department is happy with that being gone.
Heard the mayor of Hampton Hills go on about that whole thing.
Yeah. I think they settled all their lawsuits.
Okay, we are now going to go into executive session for litigation. I don't think we'll have any action afterwards, so we don't have to have TV or recording after that.
Alan?
Do we need to have, do we need, Laura, do we need another Zoom link for this, or?
No, we can keep going on this one.
All right, awesome.
Just keep you guys there. Okay, so if I can have a motion to go into executive session for litigation. No moves?
Second.
Motion by you, or second by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Polls? Motion.